Good evening. I'm going to call to order the January 13, 2025, school committee meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of
Recording in progress.
In accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording this evening, and we are recording on Zoom for purposes of the minutes. Is there anyone else in the audience recording? Okay, seeing none. Moving on, we are going to be exiting into executive session, and we will be returning by 6:30 to return to our open session. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Yes, I will. I will make a motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene to open session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, for the purposes of to approve minutes from the executive session held on December 16 and December 23, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation and act as appropriate if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
One second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We will return at 6:30. Record? Call us back to order, January 13, 2023, school committee meeting. I'm going to read the statement quickly again. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording this evening, and we are recording on Zoom for purposes of minutes. Is there anybody in the audience or online? If you could throw your hand up if you are recording. Not seeing anyone, so we will move on. Item four, we have a couple sets of minutes to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the school committee meeting held on December 16, 2024.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the Hingham School Committee meeting held on December 23, 2024.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, so item five, this is the part of the meeting where we have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for things that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments during the new business items that are on the agenda. So is there anyone in the audience that has anything? If you could raise your hand if you are on Zoom. Not seeing any. Okay, so we're going to move over to item six. Superintendent's report. Okay.
Thank you. Well, Happy New Year, everyone, and as you're aware, the highlight of 2025 to date has been the opening of Foster School. Wanted to share a special thank you with the Foster staff for their work on January 2nd, preparing their rooms to welcome students on January 3rd. Also wanted to thank the school committee, the building committee, and everyone who worked together to make this project a reality. The best part of our opening was a dance party in the gymnasium, the first time that Foster School students have all together in one room at one time. So it's a really special moment, and again, many more great things to come for Foster. We look forward to welcoming the broader community to the building. We will do a formal ribbon cutting later in the spring, and we'll also provide opportunities for people to tour the building, so stay tuned for that. Next up, wanted to just share a few arts updates. The arts program continues to impress us with their talent. On Thursday, January 9, the middle school and high school small ensembles warmed a winter night with their beautiful music and incredible talent that was on display. They had pieces ranging from Star Wars to Charlie Mingus, so quite a range of the program there. Tomorrow night, the Jazz Band is going to share their talents with the residents of Peniman Hill. So it's been a goal of the music department this year to really do more community outreach and to share this talent with the community, and so grateful to Brian Sincotta and the Jazz Band for arranging that. And finally, this past week, the middle school students began auditioning for the play Matilda, and we look forward to seeing that final production this spring. Another special moment this past week was Adelia Day. So as you may know, earlier this year, the Hingham Select Board issued a proclamation declaring January 7 as Adelia, the Wonder Girl Day, to honor the legacy of beloved South School student Adelia. Last Thursday, the South School community celebrated Adelia's legacy with school-wide activities, and across our district, we marked the day with special acts of kindness. A few high school athletics updates. So this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to watch the Hingham Girls Basketball Team play at the TD Garden in the annual Andrew James Lawson Foundation Tournament. So the team was honored to have this opportunity and represented us well. Last week, I enjoyed watching the well-attended Hingham High Wrestling Meet, which included a veterans' celebration. Really terrific turnout for the event, and many thanks to the broader community who came to support us. And finally, we want to send congratulations to high school boys coach Tony Messina, who had a milestone of 250 wins on Saturday, which is quite an impressive feat. And then lastly, I wanted to remind the community of our kindergarten registration night and information night, which will be held this week on Wednesday, January 15. So we look forward to highlighting our program and welcoming new families to Hingham Public Schools. And then finally, with some late breaking news, I'd like to congratulate our All-Star Student Representative Slater Fairfield, who just committed to a college. Do you want to share your news, Slater?
Yeah, I got into Colby, which is awesome.
Terrific. Well, we congratulate you. We really appreciate all the time that you spent here with us on the committee, and so wanted to celebrate with you on that. So.
Okay. All right, so item seven is communications. Anything? No. Okay, by the superintendent. 7.2, student communications.
So students are excited, or not so excited, depending on how their vacation went, to be back in high school for the next semester. We're entering the mid-year next week, and that marks the seniors' last eighth of high school. And I believe the countdown is right around 85 days until graduation, which many are keeping in their heads and counting down, which is quite exciting. Yeah?
Great. Thank you. 7.3, other communications. Anyone on the committee have anything? Okay. All right, going on to items eight is unfinished business. We don't have anything this week, so we move over to item nine. We'll start off with 9.1 to discuss out-of-state and overnight trips for athletic competitions and act as appropriate. I think I saw Jim Quattramone on. Take us through this.
And if not, I can talk us through. So we have a few out-of-state field trips for high school athletics. So the first was submitted by the wrestling team. They will be heading to Mount Hope, Rhode Island, on February 8.
I'm unmuted now if you need me.
Thanks, Jim.
That was actually a location change. It would have been on your last packet. They decided to move that event to Mount Hope, and it's just simply a day trip.
Any questions? Okay.
Do you want to do these one at a time, or do you want me to go right into the spring?
We'll do one at a time, Jim.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the wrestling trip on February 8, 2025, to Mount Hope, Rhode Island.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Next.
There are two trips here. I'll do them one at a time for crew. These are annual trips. The first is to Bulldog Landing in Hanover, New Hampshire for a regatta day trip on 5/10/25. That's a weekend, no school missed. And same for 5/17 to Wilson's Landing in Hanover, New Hampshire.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the trip for the crew team to Bulldog Landing, Hanover,
New Hampshire on May 10, 2025, and also for a trip on May 17, 2025, to Williams Landing.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay. All right, thank you, Jim.
Couple more?
Oh, there's more.
Couple more.
Sorry.
So we have boys lacrosse. The first one is a trip to New York, to Saratoga. Weekend trip overnight to scrimmage against two high-level New York teams. That is, this particular trip is not an annual trip in itself, but to locations in New York to chase that higher-level competition is an annual practice that we've been running through. There will be a component, some sort of trip. For example, on one trip, we visited the 9/11 monument. We haven't decided exactly what that additional piece will be for this trip, but there will be something added to sort of provide an educational piece or exposure to something more than just the high-level scrimmage, though that scrimmage will help prepare, those scrimmages will help prepare our team for our upcoming season.
I will make a motion to approve the trip for the boys lacrosse to Saratoga, New York on March 29 to March 30, 2025.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the boys lacrosse trip to Glastonbury, Connecticut on May 10, 2025.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, I think that one's it.
That is it.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Moving over to 9.2. So for the next few items, they are all budget-related, so I'm going to pass this over to Katie Roberts. It will fall under 9.2 through 9.5.
Thank you, Ness, and I also wanted to just express my appreciation for the engagement this evening. I'm grateful to everyone who turned out in person this evening to join us, and also wanted to acknowledge that there are 69 people online as well. And again, budget season is a long, arduous process. It's an iterative process. We will be having new information at every meeting, and so again, very grateful to everyone for their engagement in the process. So tonight, we're going to begin, I'll let Sherry take a minute to pull up our slides. Wanted to begin by saying that much of the presentation this evening will be given by the central office team, so that includes myself, Erica Pollard, our Executive Director for Curriculum Instruction, Ayesha Opang, our Business Director, and Barbara Cattaldo, our Executive Director for Student Services. While we will be the ones doing most of the presenting this evening, also wanted to acknowledge the other administrators who joined us in some of the decision-making around the budget process. So wanted to acknowledge the principals, who are all here this evening, the curriculum directors, who are both here and online, and other administrators, who will be providing input throughout the process. So I wanted to start, you can go ahead, yeah, thank you, thank you, Sherry. Wanted to begin just by providing an overview of what you can expect, not only tonight, but over the course of the next several weeks. So tonight, I'll go over the budget process and timeline, talk a little bit about our communication strategy and how we'll plan to keep the community engaged and informed. I'll provide some budget context for tonight's presentation. That will include priorities, assumptions, and budget drivers, curriculum instruction initiatives that helped inform the process, academic data, financial and enrollment data, and then that budget context will lead into the actual proposals. So just a reminder that this is an iterative process, so this will be our first presentation of our best thinking at this moment in time, knowing that our conversations will continue over the next several weeks. So just a word about our budget process. So budget process essentially begins the moment school begins. So just as we welcome students into our schools and hallways, we begin planning for the following year. So starting in early October, we had meetings with our department heads, first of all, to really get a handle on FY25 budget, where last spring, we had so many variables and such kind of a moving target with ongoing contract and negotiations and such. We did take some time unpacking the FY25 budget to make sure that principals and other district leaders had a sense of our current staffing levels and to communicate expectations around expenditures for the year ahead. We then shifted gears to begin to determine FY26 budget priorities, and we'll share those in more detail this evening. Two main things will inform some of our budget priorities. One is a process that we call the Portrait of a Learner Initiative, that we have been working on all fall, trying to define the skills and competencies that our students will need as they're planning, not only for their future, but also engaging in their day-to-day school life. That Portrait of a Learner Initiative is going to inform our next round of strategic planning, so we'll be beginning at the end of this month to craft our strategic plan for the 25 to 28 school years, and we'll discuss more about that as we proceed through the budget presentation. This year, we usually use two different terms, level services and level funded. This year, we had a third term, and that's the MOU budget, which I will explain shortly. So we were aspiring to become as close to level services as we could within what I'm going to call the MOU budget, which I will explain shortly. And so department leaders and principals, again, were given instructions to aspire to get as close as we can to level services within the constraints of the budget. And so, given the MOU, which I will explain shortly, we did propose some reductions and reallocations in light of the 3.5% MOU with the town of Hingham. And again, much more will be shared on that in future slides. I also wanted to share an overview of our budget calendar and what you can expect at each of the meetings. So this evening is our initial budget presentation, where we'll primarily focus on general education, special education, and professional development budgets. Again, these were crafted in collaboration between the principals and our curriculum directors. On January 16, so that will be this Thursday, we'll focus on central office budgets, including technology, facilities, athletics, and transportation. And then on January 27, we'll synthesize the information from the 13th and 16th, take into consideration any conversations that we've had this evening, and make some additional adjustments and prepare another presentation for that meeting. January 29 is our Capitol Outlay Meeting, and then we will begin some joint sessions with the town. So we'll have a meeting on the 4th that will include the school committee, select board, and advisory committee. On February 10, we'll have a public hearing on the budget. February 13, we'll give a presentation to the advisory committee, and then on February 25, there will be a joint session. So again, this is the first of many conversations, and we have a long road ahead of us. When we are considering our budget, one of the most important things that we can do is to try to communicate as effectively as we can. So I first want to speak to our staff who are in the room and also online. We will do our very best to communicate information to you as we can in the moment. I know that these conversations are going to be difficult and challenging. We've been working very hard to build trust this year, and I know that these budget conversations will be challenging. And please know that we will share information as we can, and again, hope to approach some of our conversations in a compassionate way with caring for the staff that will be impacted by some of our conversations this evening. To the community, we will be as transparent as possible, appreciating that for many in the community, this might be your first budget meeting, and again, grateful to you for joining us. So we will do our best not to use education lingo and acronyms. If we do, I know Carrie Ne will pause me, she's very, she's the acronym queen, and makes sure that we explain any education lingo that we're using. We will also be transparent by any budget slides, and associated documents will be posted on the district website. And so likely first thing tomorrow morning after this meeting, we'll make sure that we get this information up so the community can digest it. We will also, hopefully, within a reasonably timely manner, I'm grateful to Ellie Anderson, who synthesizes the school committee meetings and provides timestamped analysis of the video of this evening, if anyone wants to go back and review any of the tapes from this evening. And then finally, one of our best modes of communication with the broader community, particularly our parents and caregivers, has been our principal newsletters. So we will be providing almost weekly reminders of the budget meeting calendar and provide any updates through that venue. We'll also send centralized communications as appropriate, but most families are generally reading their principal newsletters, and so that will be a primary driver of our communication And so next, we'll share a bit about the budget priorities that I alluded to. And so first and foremost, at the center of any budget conversation in the school setting is, of course, our students. And to help us to frame our thinking around students' needs and preparation for their future, we did engage in a process known as Portrait of a Learner. Other districts call it a vision of a graduate. We have settled on Portrait of a Learner as the title of this initiative. And it's a visioning session with the entire community, parents, students, caregivers, our administration team, broader members of the community, about the skills and competencies that we want our Hingham High graduates to have. We also took into consideration, in the Portrait of a Learner, the range of needs, interests, and future paths that students might take. So all of these factors will factor in to our budget conversations this evening. I alluded earlier to our strategic planning process that will begin later this month. We are currently in year three of a three-year strategic plan. Generally, we would be using strategic plans to drive our budget conversations. In this year, we will have to make some assumptions about what some of the strategic elements will be. Many of the themes from our past strategic plan will be carrying over into the next round, and so we can make some assumptions about what will be included in the strategic So in terms of our budget priorities, to articulate them a bit more granularly, so again, the overarching themes of the Portrait of a Learner and strategic plan will inform the budget. Our multi-tiered system of academic and social-emotional support was a main element of our 2022 to 2025 strategic plan, and has been really our primary focus as a district and mechanism for improving our programming. And so we will, at the center of this budget, try to continue to strengthen and sustain the tiered systems of academic and social-emotional support to ensure the success of all students. As we've shared at recent school committee meetings, we also this year have, and over the past several years, been working tirelessly on improvements to our student services and special education programs. So as you may know, we conducted an audit of our special education programs, and that audit is informing some of the improvements that we are making. And so that will also be a factor in our budget planning. Next up, one of the most important drivers that we have for improvement in any school district is professional development. So we'll continue to commit to aligned, relevant, and robust professional development for educators across all of our bargaining units, not only our educators, but also our paraeducators and other student-facing roles as well. And next up, we have continued focus on our facilities and operations, which is kind of a perennial goal. And so that would include, context including safe welcoming and well-maintained facilities, high-quality and reliable technology. And in this budget, we also want to make sure that we're promoting efficient financial and HR operations to support the smooth functioning of the district. So in my introduction, I alluded to an acronym, MOU. And so, given the training that I've received from Carrie Ne, I will articulate what MOU stands for. MOU is a memorandum of understanding that the town engaged in in 2023. It is a four-year commitment that was, again, signed in March of 2023 by the school committee, select board, advisory committee, the superintendent, and the town manager. And the intent of the memorandum of understanding, which occurred at the same time as our override, was to maintain cost increases at a specific rate as proposed by the Sustainable Budget Task Force. So that Sustainable Budget Task Force set the percentage at 3.5% for the FY25 through FY28 years. So there was an understanding when the MOU was signed, that due to increases in personnel costs, special education, and energy costs, and so on, that it was likely that this MOU would not fully meet the needs of the district. But at that time, there, I will pull out a quote from the MOU, that there was an understanding that in order to prioritize the utilization of available resources, we had an understanding that certain programs and activities might be funded at lower levels than desired, and it left the town administrator and school superintendent clarified their responsibility for those prioritizations and cuts for both the municipal and school departments. And so again, I own this responsibility, and that is the reason this evening I will be doing most of the presentation, but want to clarify again that all of our administrators were involved in these difficult decisions and grateful for their support. So given the budget context, we did make some assumptions when approaching budgets. We did take a zero-based budget for discretionary lines, and those include supplies, techs, and apps. We did, however, over the past couple of years, really cut deep into those lines. There wasn't much further to go. So students need curriculum materials, software, and so on, and so we weren't able to go very deep into those discretionary lines because those cuts had already been made in previous budgets. The next assumption that we made is when there was what we call an efficiency, which was a retirement or a leave, we would look closely at that to see if we could use that as part of our cost-saving measures. And so we will see some examples of those efficiencies through retirements and leaves this evening. We looked carefully at the staffing that we had, considered whether we could restructure or reassign and make most efficient use of our staff. We looked closely at our enrollment and class sizes. On Thursday night, we'll discuss in more detail some of the fees that we will be considering. Also looked at some of our offsets that come from things like kindergarten tuition and so on. And again, the message to our building and district leaders was to aspire to approach level services as quickly as we could within the constraints of that 3.5% MOU, and to the extent possible, to prioritize student-facing positions. MOU is a memorandum of understanding that the town engaged in in 2023. It is a four-year commitment that was again, signed in March of 2023 by the school committee, select board, advisory committee, the superintendent, and the town manager. And the intent of the memorandum of understanding, which occurred at the same time as our override, was to maintain cost increases at a specific rate as proposed by the Sustainable Budget Task Force. So that Sustainable Budget Task Force set the percentage at a three and a half percent for the FY '25 through FY '28 years. So there was an understanding when the MOU was signed, that due to increases in personnel costs, special education, and energy costs, and so on, that it was likely that this MOU would not fully meet the needs of the district. But at that time, there, I will pull out a quote from the MOU, that there was an understanding that in order to prioritize the utilization of available resources, we had an understanding that certain programs and activities might be funded at lower levels than desired. And it left the town administrator and school superintendent clarified their responsibility for those prioritizations and cuts for both the municipal and school departments. And so again, I own this responsibility, and that is the reason this evening I will be doing most of the presentation, but want to clarify again, that all of our administrators were involved in these difficult decisions and grateful for their support. So given the budget context, we did make some assumptions when approaching budgets. We did take a zero-based budget for discretionary lines, and those include supplies, techs, and apps. We did however, over the past couple of years, really cut deep into those lines. There wasn't much further to go. So students need curriculum materials, software, and so on. And so we weren't able to go very deep into those discretionary lines because those cuts had already been made in previous budgets. The next assumption that we made is when there was what we call an efficiency, which was a retirement or a leave, we would look closely at that to see if we could use that as part of our cost-saving measures. And so we will see some examples of those efficiencies through retirements and leaves this evening. We looked carefully at the staffing that we had, considered whether we could restructure or reassign and make most efficient use of our staff. We looked closely at our enrollment and class sizes. On Thursday night, we'll discuss in more detail some of the fees that we will be considering. Also looked at some of our offsets that come from things like kindergarten tuition and so on. And again, the message to our building and district leaders was to aspire to approach level services as quickly as we could within the constraints of that three and a half percent MOU, and to the extent possible, to prioritize student-facing positions. So given all that, we do need to take a look at some of the key budget drivers that are at play, not only in our own district, but in any district. So first and foremost, we need to meet contractual obligations. And so we need to consider that we have anywhere ranging from a three to seven percent COLA for our largest bargaining unit. We have increased tuition reimbursements, stipends, and longevity, and we have increased substitute costs to cover extended leaves. As any district, town, or even family is facing increased fuel and utility costs, so that hits home here as well. Hingham Municipal Light Plant announced increase of rates of six percent as of January 2025. It's important to note that two of our buildings are heated by electricity, so that will absolutely impact us. Water is increasing three percent and sewer by eight percent. So these items are beyond our three and a half percent MOU. Special education and student service is something again, that we have been working diligently on, but there is a continued need, particularly in the area of SEL and behavioral supports for our students. We'll discuss tonight that we have had some significant gains coming out of the pandemic with regard to academic gains. The social, emotional, and behavioral gains are lagging behind. And so there are some needs to be met there. And we are also continuing to see the need for some specialized services, including speech and language is still a consideration and a key budget driver. As we discussed last year and will be continuing to analyze this year, we do have increased out-of-district special education tuitions and services. Those rates are set by an organization called OSD, the Operational Services Division. They annually provide estimates of the rates of inflation for these approved private special ed programs. This year, the increase is at 3.6 percent, 3.67 percent. However, it's important to note that individual programs can apply to OSD for what is called a program reconstruction, and these increases are approved at significantly higher rates than the 3.67 rate. And so now going to turn over the mic to our Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction, Erica Pollard, who will share some curriculum and instruction initiatives that will be driving some of our budget asks and also put it in context of academic data.
Yeah, so as Katie mentioned, the academic goals that we have for our students are certainly one of the features that drive the development of our budget. And we want to be able to continue to fund the academic initiatives that have, we've had great success with over the last few years. Probably the first and most important of those initiatives that we've worked on over the last few years is the development of our MTSS system, which if we, we're going to go through a couple of quick slides here to just highlight how much of a difference MTSS has made in our elementary students' academic achievement over the last four or five years. I've shared all of this data with you in a previous presentation in a more detailed form, so we're just going to go high level here. The academic data that we have for our kindergarten through fifth grade students has significantly rebounded from our pandemic, any pandemic losses. We have made significant investments into staffing for our MTSS structures and into reorganizing our schedules to make the best use of the MTSS resources that we have. We've also invested in a high-quality literacy program and in professional development that's going, that has continued to support those academic gains. So as we move forward into this next budget, we want to be able to sustain our K through five academic interventions, and we want to be able to strengthen our SEL MTSS through curriculum and through programming as we move forward in the next few years. We're in the process of re-envisioning what that MTSS program can look like at the secondary level, both for our academics and for SEL interventions. We are going to need to pilot a new K through five math program. We're going to continue support for our sixth through 12 math building thinking classrooms initiative that you heard about in the last meeting, which has really been very invigorating for our math department. And of course, we're going to be working on implementing our Portrait of a Learner. So this slide shows the progress that has been made from 2020 to now, where we have now eighty-seven percent of our students in this past school year at or above benchmark, as opposed to seventy-two percent in the 2020, 2021 school year. You can't really see it because it's cut off there at the bottom, but we've also significantly decreased the number of students who are below benchmark. We're just at thirteen percent in our K through five. We are seeing steady progress toward annual growth in, well, this slide shows us reading, one hundred and ninety-three percent over one hundred and seventy-one, one hundred and sixty-five percent up from one's fifty-seven last year, and two hundred percent up from one hundred and eighty percent last year. So this is great growth in reading scores for our three, students in three through five. And our special education students are also making really great gains in this same time period. They are all making more progress annually towards those annual growth targets, and as each year goes by, we're seeing more success. This is a summary in math that breaks down the progress towards annual growth in math for each grade level. Again, great improvement over previous years. And this one shows our all-students cohort and our special education cohort, so that we can see that we really are making progress with both of those groups. We're making progress in our all learners category, and our students with special needs are also making great progress towards meeting grade-level benchmarks. When we look at our MCAS results, we see similarly outstanding performance. You can see here that we have outperformed the state pretty significantly on every measure. We've got ELA three through eight, math three through eight, ELA grade ten, math grade ten. We're exceeding the state's averages everywhere. And here in science, again, same trend, we are exceeding the state standard, the state, sorry, average, both in our five and eight MCAS exams and in our grade ten, MCAS exams for science. Katie spoke earlier about the Portrait of a Learner and how we have really, we focused our attention on sort of two areas of growth here. The first is the development of a strong core program. We want students to develop the skills and competencies that they need to be successful. And I think that MTSS data and the MCAS data shows that we've been very successful in that area over the past few years. The other side of things though, is that we want to also be able to offer students a range of offerings to meet their diverse needs, their interests, and their future paths. So I wanted to highlight in this next slide, a few things that are going on in the Hingham Public Schools that are not reflected in our MCAS scores, but are a really important indicator of our success. We've got innovative programs happening, like the building thinking classrooms that we talked about in our last meeting. We have students enrolling in dual enrollment courses from Quincy College, UMass Boston, and Middlesex. We can see that based on our Class of 2024 summary of plans, our students, a lot of them are going to four-year colleges, but some of them are going to other places. We see that we have a few who are going straight into employment, going to prep schools, going to specialized schools, and we need to be able to prepare all of those students for all of those paths. So I wanted to highlight through pictures here, we have an outstanding drama program, the Traces program. You could see there, students constructing their Adirondack chairs. That's really an impressive achievement. I wish I could do that. We have a really strong arts program. You can see pottery and music. And I wanted to touch on athletics, not only as, oh, sorry, athletics, not only as part of our regular athletics program, but also the Unified Sports Program that has been really successful over the last few years. And then the final image there just shows the total number of AP courses that we've been able to offer students across a really wide range of subjects, so that we can give them opportunities to explore what's exciting for them and what might want to lead them to the next stage in their life. Oh, I almost forgot to mention my favorite one, which is the Seal of Bilitracy, because we have prepared so many students. I can't believe I missed that one. We've prepared so many students to communicate in more than one language, and that's another, obviously, great step in helping them to explore the world and getting them prepared for what comes next.
Thanks Erica for that academic context. So now we wanted to take a peek at our enrollment data, and we'll take a look at some trends. So like many districts across the Commonwealth, coming out of the pandemic, we did see some of our students heading to private school while we were masked and having some of the limitations of the pandemic. Over time, we've had some incremental decreases, and we'll talk a little bit about how this breaks out over the, over the different grade levels. So elementary enrollment did take a dip during COVID, but has largely stabilized over the years coming out of the pandemic. So we have some pretty healthy elementary numbers, with most recent numbers around seventeen fifty-six. We do however, as any district would, have some uneven cohort sizes. When a district, districts and zones their elementary schools, this sometimes results in some uneven bubbles across town. And so we did look closely at those different cohorts as we were making budgetary decisions. The middle school, again, did decline some over the course of the post-pandemic recovery. And we also, at the middle school level, some of the area private schools have changed their programming, starting their programs younger. So some of the area schools, for example, will now be welcoming sixth graders, when previously they only welcomed seventh graders. And so we're analyzing those trends closely and continue to look at our middle school And this gives you a sense of the different cohorts over time. And then finally, our high school did not see as dramatic a drop in the immediate years post-pandemic. Students at the secondary level did better in the remote and hybrid environment, the secondary level. But we have seen as, particularly as those middle school numbers decline, it logically follows that we do have some decline at our high school in terms of enrollment. And this gives you a sense of the nine through twelve cohorts. This slide here I find interesting. It is older. It's from 2023. There's a terrific website called the DESI Radar site that has some really neat analysis tools for districts to help them budget. They have not yet updated the website with more current figures. But this slide takes a look at the full-time equivalent staff per one hundred students, and we can compare Hingham's relative staffing in different areas to the state averages. So if you could proceed, sorry, to the next slide, I think the next slide is a bit clearer. So in addition to comparing ourselves to the state, for all of our academic data and for our budget data, we use what are called comparable districts, which are the districts that DESI uses when we are comparing ourselves to other districts. And so Hingham is right about on average in terms of our teacher staffing, slightly higher than the state, than our comparable districts with regard to paraeducators, relatively lean when it comes to our leadership and administration, right on par with our peers when it comes to student supports and student services, on par with clerical, and slightly below the average when it comes to technology. So another way to look at our budget and how we staff. Okay, next up is average class sizes, and first wanted to take a look at our pre-K to five average class sizes. So as I mentioned, when a district creates the zones of the elementary schools, it does on occasion create some uneven bubbles. So we do have ranges of class sizes anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five due to that, those uneven bubbles. But all of our elementary class sizes are within our current school committee policy, which sets a maximum of twenty-three students for grades K one and a maximum of twenty-five for grades two through five. At the middle school and high school, we took a look at our average class sizes, first in core content areas and then in electives. It is important to note, when we're looking at our core content classes at the middle school, that we do now have a grade six to eight teaming model, in which students have an English, math, science, and social studies teacher. So it breaks the larger school into smaller clusters or teams, and that results in our class sizes, which are hovering around seventeen. And at the high school, we have a wide variety of permutations of schedules, but that provides at least an average of the class sizes. Elective class sizes are driven by a number of factors. One is the size of some of the rooms are only built to accommodate a certain number of students. And other courses, such as our tech and engineering courses, due to safety, we simply cannot exceed kind of thresholds or recommended thresholds for various spaces. And as we were talking about the Portrait of a Learner, these elective courses really do play into that Portrait of a Learner and diverse future paths and interests and passions that students have. And now I'd like to turn the mic over to our Executive Director for Business, Ayesha Opang, who will review some of the financial data.
Thank you, Katie. To start off in terms of the budget, one of the first slides that we wanted to present was kind of giving the composition of our budget, just to start you off, in terms of looking at where about eighty-one percent of our budget consists of personnel. About fifteen percent of our budget is in terms of contracted obligations, and about four percent of our budget or even is about, is at discretionary items in there. In terms of looking at that model right here, it gives you an idea that in terms of budget decisions that we make, because the discretionary part of the pie is so small, and it includes supplies, books, and other items similar to those, we don't have as much space or space to even make further reductions or adjustments to that area. So in terms, and for contracted items, what we found is that for contracted obligations, there are things that we have to do. So it kind of leaves us, in terms of the bigger part of the pie being the personnel, where most of our reductions have fallen into as we look at the rest of the budget as we move forward. So just to kind of give off the frame overall, what our budget is composed of and how it dictates how the decisions that we were able to make during our budget process. The next slide here is an actual, the town MOU forecast. In terms of the town, what, what we have here is a summary page of exactly what our education, the education budget is for this year, being seventy million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand. As Katie alluded to and mentioned, we, this is just three point five percent of our base budget from 2025. In 2025, we were able to, during town meeting, we got an additional two million dollars voted into our budget during town meeting. One point four of that went towards special education costs, and five hundred and sixty-one thousand went into other costs, primarily personnel costs. The budget for, for 2026 is based on that three point five contractual amount that we will, we had, that had been signed back into 2023, as Katie mentioned, and it's exactly that amount, that three point five percent amount. Just to give you an idea as to what that amount, where that amount is coming from. Okay? In this overall budget slide here, I know it's a little bit small, what we do here is kind of show the total budget, all the budget lines, and I'll kind of walk you through what those lines are. I don't, Katie, there's no way to make it any bigger, right? You can't make the slide any bigger, right?
That's just it.
That's just it, okay? All right. In terms of, just kind of giving you an idea, in terms of school committee costs, that line includes mostly legal fees, regular education legal fees, and a small increase in those fees, about five percent, just in terms of just budgeting for any changes in costs for legal over next year. For administration, for that line, administration really is our central office, so includes all administrators, admin assistants, and all supplies and contracts that keep the whole district going, basically, in terms of, from an administrative perspective. That percentage is about a four percent increase, and includes contractual increases that we would have for the school district. The building administration line here would be the elementary, all our schools, all our schools, in terms of our four elementary schools and our two secondary schools, and includes principal costs, admin assistant costs, as well as any supplies or conference and travel expenses within the individual buildings. The teaching line includes all teaching expenses, including our educators, our paraeducators, and our supplies as well baked into that line here. The increase reflected here primarily include the increases contractually as part of our personnel costs for this upcoming year. And we've had a small increase to our supply lines this year because, as the principals can attest to, I think some of the cuts that we had last year were so deep that we had to bring back some of those expenses this year because we just weren't able to continue with those cuts at the level that the cuts were made from last year. So you'll see a little bit of a bump in terms of supplies, textbooks, and technology as well, too. For instructional equipment, that line is fairly flat. It includes equipment in terms of our copiers and paying any lease payments on that as well. The instructional technology line, you'd see as a big bump here compared to the previous year. The reason for the big bump in terms of our technology would be for Chromebooks and other computer devices within our technology department. In the previous year, those were paid for using S F funds, and it completed all our use of our S F funds that year, and we had to bring it back, run it back again the year after, so that's where that bump is coming in.
Never in capital, too.
Remember, we moved it as part of the override.
I'm saying, and it used to be in capital.
It used to be in capital, yes. Thank you, Jen. In terms of library, the library line includes our library staff and any books and supplies that the librarians need. Our counseling line would be our guidance. The counseling, counseling, and we're from the general ed and special ed and psychological services. If anybody went back to compare my slides from last year, you'll see that there would be a little bit of a change in those lines, just because I tried to make sure that I lined everything up in terms of staffing, and there was some reorganization or reclassification just to make sure that everything lined up correctly. Health services would be mostly in terms of our nurses and any supplies that they require. Transportation would be our buses and operating those buses and the leases that come along with that as well. That food service line was a small line back in 2023. It's negligible, to be honest. In terms of athletics, the comparison of athletics from one year to the next, we're looking at a little bit of a bump here, primarily because the number before was shown net of our athletic fees, revolving fees, whereas this year, I'm showing it grows, just so you have the full extent of what that cost us. Student activity, other student activity, that would be in terms of both middle school and high school activities that happen in terms of clubs and other activities. Security, we have a very small line for security, and we're just maintaining. Custodial would be all our custodians and supplies and others that we need for our custodial units. Heating of buildings, what we've done here is a little bit of a reclass between our heating and utilities because Foster used to be all oil, and this year it'll be moving into electricity. So we'll definitely be more efficient in terms of that, so just a change around in terms of that. Maintenance of grounds, that has remained flat. Plant maintenance, you'd see we actually are fully staffed for maintenance crew this year. In previous years, we were struggling a little bit because we had a lot of people out on different leaves. This is the first time, I think, that we're actually fully staffed in that line for a long time. So we're pleased about that, but it also means that there's a little bit of a bump in costs because of it now. In terms of repairs, this includes all types of repairs, including maintenance repairs, some maintenance repairs, and there is some educational repairs in terms of, for example, the music department has a small repair line, art department, we have a small repair line just for any repairs within instructional repairs here as well. Employee retirements, that line is pretty flat from the previous year. The rents and building costs here reflects our costs for renting our space in Waymo for Traces. Spared supervision would be our central office staff, did I skip something? No, sorry. Spared supervision would be our central office staff, including our student services directors and our elementary and secondary administrators, our admin assistants, and any other costs that helps run the administration of the special ed department. Spared instruction includes both teaching and learning in terms of our speech and teachers, as well as our paraeducators in this line as well. Professional development for spared is very small, it just reflects, it's just flat from the year before, and in that line, there really is anything that's specific to special education. Spared counseling, just really staffing costs and spared psychological services. The transportation line for spared, most of our transportation is done in-house, so we haven't seen big increases in that line. Thankfully, most districts are seeing huge increases. A lot of the increase here is really in terms of our personnel costs. And our spared programming in terms of tuitions, those numbers have come down from last year slightly because although we've had increases in terms of overall tuitions costs, because we have one student who is matriculating out of the special ed department, and we have a few that are hopefully going to be done with their courses this year. So hopefully with those reductions, it'll help our budget line in terms of that as well, once everything continues to be the same. But that's one of the areas that we can never really fully accurately budget for because when we think we're losing some students, we have new people coming into town as well. So it's just kind of a rotating door in terms of our tuitions. For vocational, transportation, and tuition, you'll notice that although, from year to year, although we've budgeted like about $10,400 for transportation, it's usually zero because it's kind of absorbed into the special ed transportation line. In terms of tuitions, we have a slight increase this year because the fees have increased, and we have a few applicants this year for vocational tuitions. The way we structured, it's a little bit different in terms of that summary page this year. I tried to include the reductions parallel to the budget lines so that you can see exactly what buckets are impacted by that, as well as the town MOU, we're projecting about 1.2 million for the town MOU this year, being additional funds that we will receive as part of the MOU. And our revolving and grants, we will speak more to that later, but primarily in terms of the grants, most of our grants are really special education grants, whether it be Circuit Breaker or IDA. We also have a small medical, the medical grant, we apply part of the medical grant to instruction. And in terms of our revolving accounts, we have an athletic revolving, our high school and middle school activity fees that we charge. We also have our building fees that we charge as well. That is one of those revolving accounts that actually goes against our budget as well. And in a later slide, I'll take you through those other areas as well, too. And then we have our revolving and grants, which reduces our overall budget line. And then we have our balanced budget, which comes down to the amount that the town has allocated to us, which is a seventy million three hundred and eighty-three, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. Do you have any questions here? Yes, Michelle?
I do, sorry. Just a couple. Two things I wanted to clarify, two clarifications and then a question. Two clarifications, just on the food service, because there are people in the audience and people listening, it's an enterprise fund, right? So there is quite a bit of expense associated with food service, and it's just offset with the revenue that we bring in. I just didn't want it to seem like, oh, food service is a nothing line item, it's just balanced out itself. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I think similarly for security, it's not that we're not spending money on security or that the schools are not secure, it's just that a lot of that gets funded out of capital outlay, right? When we need to update security equipment, and then as well as agreements and memory and understanding that we have with police and fire in the town to help support the security at the school. So I just wanted to clarify those two things. And then on the million two thirty-six seven ninety-nine, the MOU contributions, that is what we're asking the town to give in addition to cover the out-of-district special education. Okay, so that is not a given, that is what we're going to be requesting from the town.
As part of the MOU, it's kind of a given.
That's the over, that's the over, okay, that's what I just wanted to do.
It's over the two percent threshold.
That's over the two percent. Okay, perfect. That's why I just wanted to make sure that was what they expect. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I like these questions, Michelle.
Can I have clarifications when she's done?
Yeah.
And just a clarification, not clarification, but just a reminder that for that repair line, the maintenance department does a lot of in-house repairs, and it's a significant cost savings. And then the transportation line, does that include the EV buses that we're planning on?
It does.
I think it does, yes.
Thank you, Ayesha.
Well, this slides as well. I can be done if you want to.
No. Keep going, keep going.
The next slide is, and I'll run through this as well, Jen, this is your favorite slide, I think. So it's the grants and revolving slide here. And what it does for those people who are new to this, what we do here is that we set up with the gross special ed spending, and it gives a detailed outline of the grants that we apply to special ed, as well as any revolving accounts that are applied to special ed as well. We also have the MOU deduction or contribution from the town, which is also another part of what reduces our overall special ed costs. And then it brings us down to our net special ed expenses, which will be paid out of our operating budget. The only thing I wanted to just kind of highlight in terms of those, you would see that for preschool for this year, although we brought it down a little bit from the previous year because in the previous year, we have a deduction of $400,000. The $400,000 was in consideration of the fact that we were going through, in terms of, so the $400,000, we tried to take up the maximum amount of the revolving from the preschool at that point in time. But over time, in looking at what we do is that we budget for the revolving accounts up until another four to five years, just to make sure that that revolving account or these revolving accounts will have enough money to keep on funding the budget over time. So although here, I'm only showing the current year, in terms of my forecasting over time, I'm kind of looking at it in terms of on a longer term or longer scale, just to make sure that we will always have those funds available for funding the budget. And we don't reduce most of it all at once. Over time, what I would like to be able to get back to is to make sure that whatever we take in, we are taking out, and we shouldn't be going over the amount that we actually bring in in any one year. Because of the needs that we have right now, it is, a lot of those revolving amounts are higher than how much we were actually taking in, as you'll see in the next slide. But I just want to just kind of, in terms of where you see a reduction in those revolving accounts from last year, it's my idea that I'm trying to slowly bring it down so we can ensure that over time, we will have those revolving funds available. This is an essential part of how we balance our budget. In terms of the regular education, there's athletics and middle and high school activity as well. Kids in Action, the food service account this year, I am not taking any funds out of the food service account this year because the food service account will be contributing almost $400,000 towards a repair itself for the RTU. So given that huge reduction in that balance, I thought it prudent not to take any more out of that account as part of balancing the budget for this year. Do you see any other observations that I'd like to bring to your attention here? I think that's it in terms of the grants and revolving. And on the next slide, please, Sheri. This slide here just kind of shows the ins and outs of those revolving accounts, just to show you what the opening balances are. We've tried to make sure that in previous years, that we've done a good job of maintaining those balances, just to make sure that when we are in a position where we're most needed, that it would be available, and we're finding that now is a time that we need to depend on those revolving accounts. And by not spending down on it earlier years as drastically, it's available now to us at a time when we have huge cost increase. Any questions? No? Okay, good. Awesome.
Thank you, Ayesha. So these next set of slides were crafted by the elementary principals, and so I wanted to thank Tara Boning, Gregoria Lamoth, Jonathan Haas, and Matt Shifely for their input on our elementary budget. So we took into context all of the earlier slides that I mentioned around enrollment, initiatives, academic priorities, and so on, and are sharing this evening our best thinking at this time, given the budget that we've been allocated. And so, again, a few of the considerations that we have include the school committee policy that indicates a grade K to one, maximums, class size of twenty-three, grades two to five, maximum of twenty-five. Also considered just enrollment trends, again, our elementary enrollment has been reasonably level from twenty-three to the present. We did take a look at, as we mentioned, some of the unevenness of cohorts that result in varying staff levels, but overall, our elementary enrollment has been reasonably level. Our desire, as Erica Pollard shared earlier, is to maintain our MTSS academic supports in reading and mathematics to the extent possible, to maintain our MTSS social, emotional, and behavioral supports to the extent possible. There was There was a proposal by the elementary principals to move from a six-day rotation of specialist classes to a five-day rotation of specialist classes, and we will explain more about that. And again, the principals are available to answer questions from the committee as needed. And we did take into consideration that we did make significant cuts in FY25 to the text budget, technology app budget, and supply budget. So we felt that there was no additional wiggle room there or levers that we could pull without compromising instruction. So before we proceed to the next slide, I just wanted to share, again, that we hope to proceed with compassion and sensitivity. All of the reductions that will be named this evening have humans associated with them who have brought enormous value to the district. And so again, just want to be clear that we're hoping to proceed with sensitivity as we can. Thank you. So in collaboration with the elementary principals, we proposed to the committee the following reductions. So again, we did take advantage of retirements when possible. So the assumption there, when a staff person retires at a top step or near top step, we do attempt to replace them with a less experienced teacher at a master's five or below. And so we do have a retirement at the elementary level, and we anticipate a savings of around 40,000 from that retirement. We did propose as a team, the reduction of the writing specialist, a position that I will share more information about and the impact that that position has brought to the district. We currently, at each elementary school, have four interventionists, that's part of our MTSS academic structures. As a team, we proposed reducing that by one per elementary school, for a total of four FTEs across the district. That'll represent a savings of 189,880. This next proposal was not without enormous conversation. So as I mentioned in the previous slide, there was a proposal by the elementary principals to move from a six-day specialist cycle to a five-day specialist cycle. So currently, our elementary students, over the course of the six-day cycle, have a specialist in art, music, computer science, library, what am I missing? Physical education and Spanish. So in the reduction from a six-day specialist cycle to a five-day specialist cycle, the proposal was to reduce the elementary Spanish teachers. Again, not without great conversation and a challenging decision to make. That would result in savings of 408,847. And then finally, in looking at some of the uneven cohorts, there were several areas that we considered potentially reducing a general education teacher. The math gets tricky in that, for example, if you have a first-grade cohort of 50 students, and we are trying to achieve an average class size of 23 students, we cannot have two sections. Instead, we would have three sections. And so we looked closely at that. We do have a few cohorts that are cutting close to the margins and are ones that we can reconsider as we discuss further. But we did find a, one cohort at East that we could still get within the school committee guidelines by reducing one elementary teacher. And so that brings us to a total of 10 FTEs at the elementary, representing a savings of 770,106. On the next slide, I did want to preempt the questions that I know that will be coming around the impact that this would have on our elementary program. Wanted to acknowledge the value that our writing specialist has brought to the district. It provides opportunities for job-embedded coaching. The writing specialist has been instrumental in leading professional development, providing opportunities for writing across the curriculum, and coordinating cross-curricular integration. As Erica mentioned in our presentation around our multi-tiered system of supports in the academic realm, our interventionists provide reading and math support through our MTSS program. And so reducing the interventionists from four to three will result in a somewhat reduced MTSS capacity. Again, the elimination of the elementary Spanish program was not without great conversation. We are concerned that it does reduce the exposure of our elementary students to not only world languages, but also to world cultures. And so to remediate that impact, the World Language Director will work with classroom educators and other specialists to integrate at least the cultural aspects of the elementary Spanish program, to integrate that across the curriculum. And as I mentioned, the reduction in the one East elementary general education teacher, it will result in slightly larger class sizes, but at least based on the enrollment that we see today, those class sizes will still be under the school committee threshold. I'll pause here for any questions, or I can proceed through to secondary and take questions at the end. I'll proceed. Okay. So next up is our secondary budget, which was developed by Derek Smith and Dr. John Bucky. So Erica, in her presentation, discussed quite a bit about our Portrait of a Learner, which is a K-12 initiative, but has specific considerations when we're looking at our secondary program. So the implementation of that Portrait of a Learner informed many of the decisions. We do, of course, want and need to maintain a rigorous curricula at secondary level, enable all students to meet graduation requirements and competency determinations. But as importantly at the middle school and high school level, is maintaining that range of offerings to meet the diverse needs of our student and support the student's interests and future paths. And so just want to note, similar to elementary, in FY25, we made significant cuts to our text budget, technology apps, and supplies. And so we have found in living that budget this year, that no additional cuts to these lines can be made without compromising our curriculum and instruction. And so at the secondary level, as mentioned, we looked to efficiencies first, so anytime there was a retirement, if we could consider that as a part of our cost savings. So we do, at the middle school, have an adjustment counselor who will be retiring. We will hire at a lower step, which will result in some cost savings. We do have a sixth-grade social studies teacher who will be retiring. We will not replace that person. That does not mean that we will not have three social, sixth-grade social studies teacher. There will be some restructuring of roles and assignments. We may also have to consider over time, sharing between buildings, but we will take advantage of these retirements and then redeploy existing staff to fill the needs that we have. We will reduce one reading interventionist at the middle school, and we're looking to restructure our grade six exploratories slightly. When we come back to you later in January, Principal Smith will share some thoughts on what that will look like and some of the tweaks to the schedules that will be made. And so, again, preempting the impact of these proposed HMS reductions, the reduction of that social studies teacher will result in somewhat higher class sizes, but we do currently have average class sizes around 17, 18 at the middle school, so we can proceed with that. The reduction of a reading interventionist will necessitate redeploying existing staff to support some of those reading interventionists. And reconfiguration of the grade six exploratories, we're hoping will actually allow us for a little bit of flexibility in scheduling some of our MTSS supports, SEL programming, and perhaps some executive functioning curriculum. And so again, more to come on that specifically when we come back to you later in January. So next up are the high school proposed efficiencies and reductions. So again, anytime there was a retirement, we did look closely at enrollment in that subject area to see if we could simply not replace that teacher. So we did have a retirement in high school chemistry that we did not plan to replace. We, Erica Pollard, when she took over as Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, she hired the current World Language Director, which creates a vacuum in our teaching staff. And so we do not plan to replace Stacy Turner's World Language Teaching role, where she is in the World Language Director role. We have one leave in ELA that we do not plan to replace for next year. We're proposing to reduce one administrative assistant at the high school and to reduce one mathematics teacher. So the impact of these proposed high school reductions, again, the reductions of science, world language, ELA, and mathematics will result in higher class sizes, and the reduction of that administrative role will result in redistribution of those administrative tasks. If I can pause here for any questions?
Just, you said it might lead to larger class sizes. Would it reduce, would it, is there a world where it would lead to reduced choices in the number of classes being taught?
That, so the challenging thing about trying to answer that question is, when it comes to elective choices, we won't have hard data until after we've gone through the program of studies and the course selection. And so we will, once we go through that process, have a better sense. We can do some kind of, you know, back of the napkin, best guesses. But at this point, we didn't think that there would be significant impact choices. However, given that there will be fewer sections of each of those courses, it sometimes will force schedules. So we, instead of having a course offered A through G, it might only be offered A through E. And so the different permutations of high school schedules in particular get very challenging. So while we won't be cutting a whole course, it might reduce the range of opportunities for the student to fit it into their schedule throughout the day.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm sort of just, I'm holding most of mine to the end, but I have a similar one about the MTSS cuts at the elementary level. I know there was, there was a big task to reconfigure the schedule when that was first implemented, and we're talking about cutting them here. Is that going to result in just redoing the whole thing? Because it took a lot of resources and time away from students to figure out the schedule. So I'm wondering, is that another impact of this, if we go ahead with these?
Yeah, so we have, as a team, begun to look at that, and again, we will go deeper with that. Our hope is, Erica shared tonight our MTSS academic data. And you'll see from the academic data that we have significantly fewer students in the red on that, which would indicate students at risk, and fewer students in that yellow zone as well. And so given that, due to the success of our MTSS program, we have fewer students in need of those interventions, the thinking is that we should be able to offer similar level of services, but we have fewer students in need of the MTSS when you look at that data. Welcome any of the elementary principals, if they'd like to comment or if you think that covered it. You can. Yep?
As far as the building schedule, which I know was a big lift, the schedule for the building, other than the five-day change for specialists, it's not going to impact the actual building schedule. And as Katie was saying, as the students are reduced, you know, as we have less kids that need that intervention, it should not increase group size. But theoretically, I think, as we, we talk about this, it would mean less children are able to be reached. But with the reductions that we're seeing, I think that should help us through. But as far as redoing the building schedule and things like that, no, that would still be in place.
So, okay. I guess I just want to point out, too, though, it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing, you know? We've seen the reduction because of the supports and the robust, you know, investment that we made as a town into this. So we'll have to see if it would maintain, so.
Any other questions? No?
So the elementary Spanish teachers, curious, how long have we had that as a program at the elementary? Is it like something that was relatively recent, or it's been there for 50 years?
Very long time. I'll let Erica Pollard speak to that.
Well, it depends on which iteration.
Okay.
So it was a program that had historically existed for a long time and then went away for a little while, and this current iteration has existed for about, I'll say, probably 15 years.
Okay. That's helpful. And then a couple of years ago, there was like a different iteration of this, of looking at removing, and I know this, I hate throwing out other options here, I recognize that, but this one in particular, I think is slightly different, which was remove one specialist across all the, all the six specialists, so that you wouldn't have one at each school, but you'd maintain basically the six, you still have all programs, I guess. Was that, again, that was a couple of years ago, there was a lot of discussion, a variety of different things. Was that considered here? Why, you know, was that considered here?
We discussed every permutation, so the elementary principals were locked in a room for extended periods. And we, over the course of the past many weeks, have gone through many different iterations. So one of the challenges to sharing is you do lose some momentum to just travel and moving around town. That is, though, something that, that was considered.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, this is our first iteration, and so we will take any feedback that we receive from the committee this evening and continue our conversations.
The one thing that just keeps popping into my head is, what about the pre-K Spanish immersion program? Like, will that, will we keep that? Will that go away?
So that is a challenge. So again, we had gained some momentum on the Spanish immersion, that is a downside.
And I think that families are, my impression is families are finding it hard to commit to an immersion pre-K program without a promise that it's going to go further than that.
Right.
And so those two issues are sort of tied together.
Okay. That's fair.
Any other questions? All right. We'll, we'll continue to take questions at the end as we go through the slides and can revisit, of course, any of the discussion points here. So next up is special education, so I'll do a brief overview, and then Dr. Cataldo and Ayesha Opong will assist with this as well. So in addition to the general assumptions and priorities that we mentioned, we do have some very specific assumptions and priorities with regard to special education. So want to make the point, when we talk about special education, that all students are general education students first. So everything that we shared previously about our MTSS structure and our general education programming is also referring to our special education students. And so strengthening the tier one and MTSS for all is part of our improvement plan. One thing that is important to note, and for community members on the line who might not be as up on the acronyms, we will be discussing something called IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And that drives a lot of our decision-making with regard to special education. So the first assumption that is made, and the first kind of mandate of IDEA, is that we provide our, all students and special education students with a free and appropriate education. That education should be in the least restrictive environment. And another component of IDEA is that the team, the individualized education plan team, are the people responsible for decision-making with regard to the services a student needs? So in the general education setting, administrators can sit in a room and have a conversation and make decisions about a budget. That is not true of a special education budget. That is made by the team of educators who are working with an individual student, determining what that student needs to access a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment. And it makes the special ed budget more challenging to predict, because throughout the course of the spring, IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, because throughout the course of the spring, IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, will be written and rewritten. And so again, we are giving our best analysis of our special education needs. But those needs will morph and change over the course of the spring as new information comes in. Also wanted to stress, I alluded to earlier, our Student Services Strategic Plan that Dr. Cataldo presented an update on at a recent school committee meeting. That strategic plan is coming out of an audit that we had of our special education program. And that improvement plan is really focusing on strengthening our specialized curriculum and support and really aligning some of our specialized programming to the needs of the students that we're seeing. One part of our analysis too was regards to our special education administrative structures. So we did recently announce, Dr. Cataldo has served us well as our interim executive director of special education. But we unfortunately cannot keep Dr. Cataldo longer, given that she is here on an interim basis. And so we have recently posted for a new special education director. And as part of that, we will be looking at our administrative structures in special education to see how we can best allocate administration resources. And also just wanted to share what I think is a very interesting slide with regard to special education enrollment. So I shared earlier a slide that showed the total enrollment of our district declining over time, particularly coming out of the pandemic. The same is not true of our special education population. Since the pandemic in 2020, we have had a slow incremental increase in our special education population. And this mirrors the trend that has been seen across the state post pandemic. And so again, while our overall enrollment has declined, our, our total N of special education students has incrementally increased. And special education students as a percentage of our total population has also increased over time. Similarly, also under the umbrella of our Student Services Department is our small, but significant ELL, English learner population. And that population, though tiny, has increased actually by 80% over time. And so that also is a consideration when we're discussing our student services budget. And so I'd like to invite Dr. Cataldo to share a bit more of her expertise around student services considerations and some of the drivers.
Sure. So you can see behind.
You might put your, yeah, a little bit closer.
How's that? Can you hear me? Thank you. So you can see behind me, I actually can see my slide in front of me. So instead of turning around and talking with my head, back of my head to you, I'm going to face you if you don't mind. But these are student services considerations that we have here. Some of these are replicating last year, some of these have changed a little bit. But they're all equally important today as they were in the past. And one at the top is the implementation of the recommendations of the program eval. That's really been driving a lot of our work this year. The entrance and exit criteria, we're working on a lot of time into that at this point, using a lot of early release time, make sure we get that done for everybody. I know that we'll be putting work into onboarding the next executive director of student services. And then, so that is new for us. The next one is the development of criteria for specialized programming and services. So when you see the RISE, the lab and the CLC, as well as speech and language, that is entrance and exit criteria. But we also have attached some outside people, which is further down on the list by having some partnerships to help us reinforce and build out what we have. We definitely have had an increased number of special education testing evals this year. Not just in-house, but a lot of our students who attend some of the private schools at private expense have been getting tested as well. So the number has gone up quite dramatically over the course of this year. We've had an increased need for related service providers, particularly in the era of speech and language services. We think doing that entrance and exit criteria is going to help us with those numbers rising. There's been an increased need of students with social, emotional learning and behavioral health. And that has prompted us for the last 18 months to address the topic of whether we need a therapeutic program in the district, and the answer is yes. And so we are exploring that along with Solsure Education Collaborative, about how we can put one in at our K to five level. It doesn't mean we don't already have our head on our middle schools as well to support all our students, but we're starting K to five. There's been an increase in tuition rates of the out of district placements. We know that the year before this, it was a 14% increase. We know the state has given us increases. But some of our most popular schools have gone back for reconstruction. And there's five schools now for fiscal '26 who will be applying for reconstruction. And I believe one of the schools did reconstruction just three years ago, two or three years ago. So they might say they're a repeat visitor, which means those prices will go above what the state level is of the, the 3%. They can go above it if they are approved for that reconstruction. As I said, we have partnerships right now with Landmark and with NESK, and that's to help both our language base and our RISE programs. We're beginning to look at our CLC and how we can also offer them support to build them out and strengthen them from the foundation up. And the other areas, the efforts to begin transition planning earlier. So not waiting till our students who are already 18, the law says really by 14, we should be talking about it. And we've been putting a lot of time and effort into how can we begin as they come through the door in ninth grade? What more do we need to do to ensure whether they're taking a diploma or they're going on for some kind of job training? The fact is, we have to make it more robust than it is. So we're really trying to think, how can we look at the problem earlier? And how can we, we build out a program that will help ensure that our students have a place to go when they leave us at 22? So, oops, can't get my slide to go up. There we go. And then in the initiatives that we have going, as again, we're in conversation with Solsure Collaborative. We thought it'd be a really great idea to begin a therapeutic program. We'll start with grades three through five. And it will be run not by us, but through Solsure Collaborative. We're looking at what school it will be in. We've not, we're looking, we've reduced it to a, to, to schools. We'll let you know when we finalize exactly where we're going to be with the program. But in addition to necessarily having our own students there, we'll have some slots that will bring students in from other districts. And we're hoping to have a component where some of our students, if they do need to go out and have an extended evaluation, can we have them stay in the district and get the, the support they need as well as the opportunity to be within the community, which is what you've heard me say now for 18 months, I want to keep our students home if we can. We have a pilot going on with behavior techs in the district. It is proving to be quite successful. We've had them coming in and working with our children. And while we were hesitant at the beginning, I think it's one of our great decisions because we've noticed a reduction in behavior as a result of having the behavior techs. So as a result of that, you'll notice in that third bullet that professional development offerings will take place next year. And they're going to include behavior tech offerings for our power educators in the district so they can have the behavioral techniques to help our students, not just in inclusion settings, but wherever they are, whether they're in the classroom or not. But they're going to have that support by people who have developed expertise of how to tackle some of those behavior problems that interrupt their learning. We're looking at again, the review and articulation of our current specialized programs. What more can we do? How do we restructure them if they need it? How do we make them more robust? We also are having a renewed commitment to co-teaching in the classroom. We know that that's really important. We can't just take our students who really are in some of our specialized programs, as well as students who need more support, push them in and say, okay, you'll be fine. Don't worry. We want to make sure we have co-teaching that will support everybody's learning approaches. And then the last thing on this list is that the initiatives over time, the idea behind it is to increase our capacity to maximize our resources and educator students in the district, which I really believe and will keep on saying until I exit the door, this is the best thing we can do is to own our children and create programming that demonstrates to them, we want them to be a part of our school community and the larger community that we have here. So that's just to give you a little bit of ideas around the initiatives. If we move on and take a look at our enrollment data, it's been broken down. How many students, in each of our schools, how many students have IEPs? How many students have 504s and what the percentage of all students that is? So you can see, it, it's not surprising that the numbers tend to be a little bit higher in the elementary. Then as they move to high school, they drop because the students have developed skills. They've become more independent, more students move off of their IEPs in high school. While they're moving on and they're more robust in those grades three, grades four, grades five, grades six, and so forth. So you can see the number that the total number is 19.2% yes. But you notice by high schools dropped to 13.5 because fewer students need that type of support. They've garnered the experience they need. And then on the next slide, you'll notice our out of district students. We broke it down this year by grades cohorts. So we have the pre-K to grade five, we have six through eight, we have nine through 12, and then we have the post-grad. So that's all of our students who are participating in out of district. And you can see the number of students each time. And we know some of the programs, the balance of numbers is very different between a collaborative and some of the private ones, and if our student has to be residential and so forth. Total number of students presently, and again, this fluctuates. This is as of January 2nd, 2025. And I think if I went back into the books today on January 13th, I might tell you that number's gone up or down by one. It's just how it is. It's very fluid. But nonetheless, the out of district cost presently a $5.76 million, which is, you know, we realize we want to be respectful of the money, but we also need to provide our students that FAP, that free and appropriate education first in the district. But if they're not able to meet with success, we have to seek some out of district placements to support them.
Thanks, Dr. Cataldo. And next up, Ayesha will share some of the financials related to special education.
I think we have one proposed reduction for special education.
Yeah, that's at the end. I think you were going to go through the, no?
Oh, that's right. Next slide.
Oh, sorry. Yep, my bad. Okay. Yeah, so we do have, again, the special education total number of students has increased slightly over time. So given the fact that our case loads are holding steady in special education, we did not feel that we could make any reductions to student facing positions in special education at this time. However, given that we will be onboarding a new executive director, we did take a look at our current structure of our special education administration staffing and would propose a reduction of $154,000 in that. And we will, again, reallocate and our administration staffing to ensure that we're being as efficient as possible.
All right. In terms of the memorandum of understanding, it seems like our budget is like the budget of the memorandum of understanding. It seems like we've been talking about it a lot too, because it's at the core of what the budget is based on right now. In terms of that, we look at our project for, for special education. There is a specific carve out, whereas with everything else, every other part of our budget, we're looking at a, we look at a 3.5% increase in our budget. For, for special education, there's a specific carve out where if the projected annual increases for out of district tuition and special education contracts is or below 2% for given fiscal, fiscal year, then the budget for those lines will increase to match the anticipated growth. If the projected annual increase for out of district tuition and special education contract is above 2%, those line items will be budgeted at 2% within the school budget. And any variance in costs above that amount will be paid through the reserve fund process if the school operating budget or any applicable grants are insufficient to cover these costs. So what we'll do is that we actually laid out that in terms of how that threshold that we have to jump to determine whether there'll be any additional costs that will be covered. That will be covered by the reserve fund process. Okay? So in terms of looking at that as well, the MOU looks at specific accounts that will be, that are carved out under that agreement and gets special attention, so to speak, as part of that, that MOU. And we're looking at tuitions because tuition, special education tuitions, as Dr. Cataldo alluded to and Mrs. Roberts, that, what's your name for a second?
Forgettable. I just had a long day.
So one of the main areas that has been carved out of special education tuition, because those are so fluid, the MOU wanted to make sure that, that, that area would be carved out so that those costs would not be too burdensome to the operating budget and would be covered through a federal fund, federal reserve, not federal reserve, through the reserve fund transfer process. Another area are specialized services. At the time of the MOU, we noticed that specialized services was an, an area within the budget where there was a level of unpredictability in that we didn't know after the pandemic. We, we did see that with MTSS being implemented, implemented, we had addressed some of the educational needs of students. But in terms of some of the specialized supports that were needed by students, we didn't have a foundation at that time to, to meet some of those needs of those students. So we carved out the specialized services in terms of any ABA specialists or any behavioral interventions that were needed or any speech or language services needed. Those areas were carved out as part of the MOU to make sure that any fluctuations in those expenses, we would have coverage for that as well. And in terms of transportation, specialized, special education transportation, that was another area where at that time, we didn't, it was hard to forecast exactly how much that it would, would cost, particularly with this contracted transportation. So that was another area that was carved out as well. And within the MOU, the financial 24 balances was a foundation for what that initial threshold would be. And we would have to jump that threshold and jump an additional 2% every year on those balances. Okay? So if it is that we using the same, the formula in terms of the 3.1 million for financial year 2024, and we apply 2% each year, you will see in the appendix at the out of district tuition in terms of that threshold that has to be jumped. It also increases by 2%, which is a lower threshold just because at the time of the MOU being written, the, the budgets of the, for, for tuition were, were increasing by about 14%. So at that point in time, we had no vision of exactly where it was going. We knew that in the past, we had seen tuition fluctuation between zero to 2% in the past. But in that one year, it had jumped by 14% and there was no clarity in terms of where it was going from there. So because over time, when we looked at what the tuitions were in the past, we were able to see that in the past, it really fluctuated around 2%. So that's where that 2% came from in terms of what, that, that increase in the fees had been over time in the past. And we were hoping that after the MOU was signed, that after getting such a huge increase, up to 14%, that those costs would come back to the 2% level. We haven't seen that happen yet. This year, the increases in, in the, the out of district tuition is at 3.47%. 3.67, sorry, percent. And in addition to that, as Dr. Cataldo and Mrs. Roberts have indicated, in some cases, it's even beyond that amount. So we're waiting for the day when those costs actually do level out and come back down to 2%. But even within our own operating budgets as well, when we look at our own staffing costs, we see that our staffing costs too are very high and are, have been increasing. And the same cost increases that we are experiencing here, those special education schools are seeing those same types of increases, and they're passing on those costs to us. Okay? Okay? So in terms of that two percent threshold, and I should be looking at the slides of, oh, okay, should probably be looking, maybe I need to sit across here because Sherry's like moving around. Okay. So with that being said, what this slide, let me just make sure, I'm Sherry, that, because I know that you went back, you went up a little bit higher than I was speaking from. In terms of this slide here, what it does now is actually in the past couple of slides, Sherry, maybe we can go back one, please, sorry? So this slide here showed a two percent increase. And in twenty twenty-six, you will see the, the three point two, three point three million here in twenty twenty-six. That number is the number that is used as part of that threshold that we need to jump to calculate exactly how much a town would transfer to the, to our operating budget. So just keep that number in mind, to that three point three, two, three, seven, six, eight number. Okay? Thank you, Sherry. So what, what we do here is that basically, similar to what the MOU did, we lay out the costs that we have for each of those buckets. For mass public schools, in the past, we had a student at, at situat, going to the situat public schools, or one of the public schools. This year, we have no student in that, in a public school district. So that's why we have zero costs here. In terms of non-public schools, those would be all our private schools and our residential special ed costs. The summer tuition private schools, that would be ESY, but ESY for those private schools.
Academic. Extended school year.
Extended school year. Thank you. The tuitions for mass public school, those would be our collaboratives. And the summer school tuition would be the extended summer year. So that extended summer year?
Yes.
For the collaboratives as well. The IDA grant, if you look at our other documents in terms of our grant revolving accounts, our grant revolving attachment that we had earlier, you would see that the IDA grant is actually a million, two hundred thousand more than that, so a million, one million, one million dollars. But here, we're looking at only eight hundred of it. In the past, two hundred thousand of the IDA grant has been used towards our own internal ESY. So you'd see consistently over time, about eight hundred thousand-ish of the grants applies directly to tuition, and the other two hundred thousand goes towards paying for ESY, our internal local ESY or extended school year. The circuit breaker is the grant that the state provides to us to cover tuitions and transportation. That particular grant is used entirely for tuitions. So, and one of the things, lines of the MOU states that we would use all of the grants that we typically use towards our grants first. So that's the bucket where we show that we're using everything about, from the IDA, we're using circuit breaker. And the two point one million, which was a twenty twenty-four number, is that two point one million here. And the two percent increase, it's two percent of the two point one million from the previous year and two, and an additional two percent of the full amount, the two point one and the forty-three thousand from the prior year is added on to get to the eighty-seven thousand. So it kind of compounds the two percent amount. So those hurdles have to be jumped first. And once we jump that hurdle and deduct it from the overall tuitions, that is how we come up with the amount that should be the town, is the town share of the out of district tuitions. Okay? So we do the same thing for transportation in terms of jumping those hurdles and calculating exactly how much should be the town share of transportation as well. Thank you. And then in terms of the specialized services, we're doing exactly the same thing. You will notice that those costs are kind of, are coming down slightly. And even our out of district tuition costs have come down slightly as well from one year to the next. But we still have a portion of that that the town will bear. Okay? And then cumulatively, taking all the buckets together, we have the tuitions, transportation, and specialized services, and we have those hurdles. And when you jump all of those hurdles, the one point two million is a one point two million additional funds that will come from the town, that the town has promised to fund in addition to our three point five percent. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay?
All right. We're going to wrap things up with professional development.
Yes.
I was just giving you a thumbs up because that's very confusing.
Okay, thank you.
My brain is spinning.
It is. I, if I could just, my editorial comment is, just think about this, right? Like, so the operational services division says that costs can increase at least three point six seven percent. Then the state allows them to charge that to districts who are prohibited from raising taxes more than two and a half percent, and absent an override. So where's that money coming from? I mean, it's just.
On top of restructuring.
On top of restructuring, right. I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
Maddening.
Absolutely maddening. Anyway, so, professional development.
Professional development. So obviously, professional development is a huge sort of lever for us to access in terms of realizing our various initiatives, both in special education and in general education. And so our priorities in maintaining our professional development budget include supporting the district initiatives that we already talked about earlier in the presentation, particularly the Portrait of a Learner, Building Thinking Classrooms. And of course, to continue our emphasis on social emotional learning and providing professional development so that teachers can better support our students in that domain. As Dr. Cataldo mentioned earlier, we're going to want to continue supporting the behavioral needs of our students through the maintenance of safety care certification and behavior tech training, tech training for paraeducators so that hopefully we can develop that capacity internally instead of looking outside the district for behavior tech support. Obviously, we need to meet our contractual obligations for professional development, particularly when it comes to graduate course reimbursement. We need to have a robust mentoring program. And we need to continue to fund the in-house professional development opportunities that we have always provided to teachers, both to help them advance their skills and to help them maintain their certifications, including those new graduate equivalent courses that we've started with this year. So the reduction doesn't tell you too much, but what I will tell you is that in preparing a proposed professional development budget, money was set aside, obviously for those contractual obligations, in addition to the money that we will need for the pilot of a new math program and the money associated with existing certifications like safety care. This reduction of professional development money will largely mean that a lot of the discretionary workshops that teachers choose or want to attend based on their individual goals, we're largely going to have to look inside to provide those professional development opportunities for folks.
I would just add one great unknown in professional development land. We do use a significant amount of federal entitlement funding for professional development. However, we won't have a picture on that landscape until much later in the spring. So if that yields some additional professional development funds, we might be able to think a bit more ambitiously. And do just want to thank and acknowledge the Hingham Education Foundation for their support of our Building Thinking Classrooms initiative. So they've funded not only the professional development for that initiative, but also some beautiful new learning spaces. So grateful for their continued support.
And the good news on this front, because there is some good news, which is that we already have really talented principals and department directors and other administrators who are very capable of providing high-quality professional development to our teachers. So I am confident that we'll be able to continue to meet the needs of our teachers moving forward.
And so, Ayesha, do you want to share the budget summary?
So it's just a summary in terms of everything that we've learned today, in terms of the total amount of our reductions. And the next page is just kind of next steps in terms of next budget meetings, just kind of starting off where we ended in terms of our next meeting on Thursday, just kind of preparing for that as well. Okay?
Yeah, because we'll have to, maybe after.
Okay.
Questions? Just to clarify, will the discussion of fees, will that be taking place at the Thursdays or is it the following week?
Largely on Thursday. Most of the fees would relate to things like athletics, potential transportation fee. And so we'll, on the later meeting in January, we'll knit together the conversation from tonight, the conversation from Thursday to give you another review of the global budget picture.
I have a question for the elementary principals. Would the change from the six to the five-day schedule, even if we did have the budget to keep the Spanish teachers, would there be a way to integrate that into the schedule or as part of that, that there's no room for an extra specialist?
So we looked at that as part of the iteration to go, when we went to a five-day schedule, we also looked at what's best for the students. When we looked at inter-reading, inter-reading follows a Monday through Friday schedule. And we sort of looked at like, how much we're putting forth into that and what is best for the students in front of us. So we did look at an iteration where we could have six specialists, where we would take one specialist and another specialist, and they would split. And one week they'd be at one school and one week they'd be at, so like PRS and foster, and then they would switch. But what we found is that when you look at that, then that child is only getting about eighteen to nineteen classes, if that, with that discipline. And so if we look at our younger, younger, younger students and they're just getting that FaceTime every other week, are we really doing them any service? Or are we, are we doing them a disservice by not giving them continual continuity in one subject area instead of flipping back and forth between two? And then from there, the way we sort of sat down and had multiple, multiple discussions about this was, in the regards of where we made the decision of what specialist, was we sort of thought about how could we use our specialists to do a lot of interdisciplinary work? And how can we lean on some of those other specialists to bring in some of the culture and some of the other pieces that we'd be losing within the Spanish position? Does that help?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
How many writing specialists do we have?
One.
It is just one? Okay.
So I just want to thank you all for putting this together. This is honestly painful to look at. I mean, it really does feel like we're, but I know, I know there's a lot of care and I take to heart what you said at the beginning, that there's, there's a person attached to all of these positions that we're, we're talking about. It does feel like we're taking a step backward, though. I mean, just, I hear, the academic information that you presented at the beginning, Erica, was really great to see what the investment that we put into the MTSS. There is still thirteen percent of that kindergarten class that are below benchmark, though. And so it concerns me with taking those away. With the middle school reading specialist that we're talking about, we've talked about needing to kind of grow the MTSS at the secondary level, in the MCAS data sort of reflect that, reflected that when we did it. And that's, it seems like we're going the opposite way. And then I do, I am concerned about the Spanish, the reduction of that, just, there's so much research saying that it's easier for kids to access that information and, and become, they have better odds of becoming fluent if they do it at a younger age. And in particular with the integrated, the preschool that we funded here, I mean, it's, I don't know. This is really, and I understand the three point five percent MOU, we all signed on to it. I just have concerns. This is just an initial reaction. I did have a couple of questions. We had some information in the packet from the town forecast, and I don't know if anyone knows the answer to that, but I know some people are at those meetings. So I'll ask it here, and then if not, then I'll reach out to the people on the town side. So for the utility costs, we talked about them, they've been raising, they've been rising for Hingham Light and also with the water and sewer. The forecast, I was surprised to see that it went down. Does anyone, the, the income for the town is projected to go down next year? I'm wondering if any, with the rates going up, why the, the money that the towns, or these entities are taking in are going down?
So for, so for those entities, then in and out?
Yeah.
Basically, so then HMLP, well, HMLP is not funded through the town at all.
Right.
So that wouldn't, their revenue wouldn't impact. The only, only, the only link between HMLP and the town is through a payment that they receive.
The pilot, yeah.
The pilot payment. That's the only link between HMLP and the town. HMLP is separate in terms of their own expenses and revenue.
Right.
So that increase would not be impacted by the town at all, right?
Right.
To the town's revenue. From the sewer and, and the sewer and the water and sewer company, those are just an in and out. So I think their increases are probably to, to keep their lights on, too, and for their own expenses. So you see a plus for their revenue, and at the bottom, you see an exact negative in terms of, it's an in and out in terms of those, those accounts themselves.
Because they mean the project that they're working on.
Okay, that's what the rates are going for?
I believe so. I remember that's what they said the town.
Is that what they, okay.
It was six percent. I think it was over three years, and it was to cover mainly the project.
Okay. All right. And does anyone know how much excess fund balance is?
I don't know yet.
No, we don't know yet.
Okay.
I know this is sobering.
Absolutely is sobering. Again, this is our initial passet recommendation. We continue to hope to save some of these positions over time. So again, it's a shifting landscape. And as we hear of, for example, additional leaves or retirements and so on, that would come into play. And so I'll continue to work with the principals on, you know, prioritizing which of these positions and programs that we might bring back as well. And so again, very grateful to the leadership team for their thoughtful work and collaboration and collegiality as we went through. And again, want to acknowledge the value that these positions have brought to our district, particularly coming out of the pandemic. These positions have really helped us to serve students and their needs.
Made a lot of progress.
Made a lot of progress.
I just, I just wanted to bring up one other thing about the retirement, teachers or certain positions retire, and you bring in younger or newer teachers. Because we just did talk about this a lot last year, kind of internally with salary negotiations, and what a benefit it can be to have some, some newer teachers come in, just to have that diversity, having some of the really experienced teachers and, as well as some of the newer people coming in, that can be really healthy for a district, too. So it's, I want to bring that up because it's, it's, I mean, we're sad to see everyone retire, you know, as, as they go out and it's some really valuable people who have done so much for so many kids. But also, it's really nice to have, you know, new people that are, you know, closer to their own education coming in, too. And it's been a good thing, so.
Yeah, it's a testament to the passion of our educators, the longevity that we have. People tend to come to work here and then stay for an entire career, decades long. And so again, a testament to the commitment and the passion of the educators that we have.
Yeah, I know it's, I want to thank you all in the audience, and I know there's some online. I know this has been really difficult. I appreciate your thoughtfulness and how hard this is. You know, it's on the other side of where we were, you know, five, six years ago. We were getting additional people in to fulfill the HTSS model. We were able to do that with, during the pandemic with the ESTR funds. We got the override passed. If, if people haven't been paying attention to the budget in the years past, they might say, you know, I thought the override was supposed to solve this problem. In years past, we had gotten four to five percent budgets. We did that through new growth in the town. The way that you build a budget on a municipality is you, you get it through your taxes, basically the tax levy, and you can increase the tax levy by new growth in addition to this two and a half percent, which drives us crazy. It's a nineteen eighties law that doesn't allow a town to raise your tax levy over two and a half percent unless you have new growth or you do an override. An override is a permanent tax increase. So we did that. But in, in doing that, because it had, it was such a significant amount and because we hadn't done an and because we hadn't done an override in so long, there was a promise made to the residents, given all of the asks that we had. We had the public safety building, we had Foster, and this override, which is a significant amount to increase all in one go. We made a promise to try to sustain budgets to the 3.5%. When the Sustainable Budget Task Force looked at it, at the time, inflation wasn't where it is. So 3.5% seemed pretty reasonable to try to stay within that range. It's been more difficult now, and we are not the only district feeling this. Every district is trying to deal with Prop 2.5. And how do you deal with these rising costs when you can't get more than 2.5%? It's, I mean, I'm looking at Dave Dua, it's a simple math problem. How, how do you increase a budget more than 2.5% if you can only get 2.5% increase in the tax levy? We have the MOU, which allows us to go to 3.5%, which is great. Through that override process, there was a stabilization fund that was set up so that we can have more than 2.5%. We have 3.5%. We here get a little bit more than that. The town has, is, is, they had alluded to this, this anything over 2% for special ed that gets covered from the reserve process. That's basically anything that is over 2% is coming out of the excess fund balance on the town side. So if you look at all of our costs together, that over 2% and the 3.5% that we're getting, we have really a three point, a 5.3% budget. And it's still not enough. And I appreciate what you're having to go through to make the hard decisions. And Katie stepped into this, and Ayesha stepped into this, and Barbara stepped into this. So I know it's challenging. And it's been a hard week, and I know you're having hard discussions, so I appreciate it.
That's only Monday.
And it's only Monday.
It's true.
But with some of that, I know Katie has been very thoughtful about trying to come up with creative ideas. She was going to present an idea that she had come up with on retirements.
Yes, and so again, want to acknowledge that we have passionate educators who devote their life and work life here to the district. But I do know that we have currently, in the Unit A contract, an early retirement incentive that if teachers let us know by June 15th of a given year that they will be retiring by the following year, is it June 1st or June? Sorry, first, I, sorry, June 1st of a given year, that they will be retiring the following year, that they get an early retirement incentive, which includes a percentage of their final year salary plus a payout of their, their sick, sick leave. Given that June 1st, we have some teachers, I believe, that have kind of reconsidered some of their plans and might be incentivized. If we can extend that early retirement incentive deadline to January 31st of this year, we wanted to offer that a possibility to teachers that might be reconsidering their retirement plans. So as I alluded to earlier, when a teacher at a top step, say, might retire at $120,000, and we can hire a teacher with, a less experienced teacher at, say, $65,000, that will be a significant savings, not only for next year, but for the, for the years to come. And so again, appreciate the expertise of these veteran educators. But if there are any educators in that category that might be rethinking their retirement plans, that's one lever we have in the toolbox that might allow us to save a few of the positions that we mentioned this evening. And again, we'll continue over the coming weeks to dig under every rock, every piggy bank that we can find to see if we can bring back some of the positions that were named this evening. Yeah.
Hi, Jaclyn Boprey, President of the Hingham Education Association. I just had a thought pop into my head. With the repeal of web GPO, I don't know that everyone really understands that. And it might be helpful to work collaboratively to educate some of our members that maybe were career transitioning from something else that paid into Social Security and now actually might be able to retire sooner. Because that restriction kind of locked teachers into having to work for many, many years in order to have a stable retirement. And that might have changed for people, but they don't know it yet. So that might be something to include, too.
That's a really terrific point, Jaclyn. And again, appreciate Jaclyn's collaboration. As I was discussing the early retirement incentive, Jaclyn was supportive of that idea and has been a helpful thought partner in this process. And so for those of you online who aren't familiar with Jaclyn was referring to with regard, regard to the windfall provision, there was recently a bill that passed the House and Senate and was high, assigned into law that public servants who receive a pension are now also eligible to receive their full Social Security for any time that they worked in the private sector. So many educators might have worked in the private sector before becoming an educator or might work in the private sector summers, weekends, and so on. And so this windfall provision will allow the educators to access their full Social Security. And so that might also change the decision-making for some educators. And so that's a great way. I think we could bundle them and message these two potential initiatives together. That might be one lever that we have. Thank you.
With that, I know the union had discussed the MOU. So there's an MOA, memorandum of understanding, given the, it is contractually obligated, there's a contractual portion of that date that the teachers would need to notify us by June 1st. Given that is something that's in the contract, we would need to vote on an MOA to change that for this year. So that has been, that's in your packet, and that is up for a vote, if you guys are up for taking a vote on that tonight.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think it's, I mean, it's a, it's a good idea. Appreciate the HEA thinking and considering it as well. I think, the one thing that I think about is appreciate any educator who might decide to take advantage of this because I also recognize that this is a vocation, right? And sort of, thinking about retirement, you sort of, we're sure looking forward to that nine-month victory lap of that last time. So appreciate for folks that this will be, you know, there'll be a lot of feelings in that, too, if they decide to do it. But I think it really, it would serve us well, obviously, in this budget season, given how difficult this is. I'd be supportive.
I will make a motion to approve the MOA with the HEA for a one-time extension on the early retirement benefit for the 24, 25 school year from, changing it from June, oh, just extending it to January 31st, 25.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you for that suggestion. Okay. Any questions before we move on to other items on the agenda? I know we have some people in the public. If you can throw your hand up, if you had any questions or comments. I'm not seeing any. Okay. All right, so we will move over to item 9.6. Thank you. 9.6, to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate?
None.
None, okay.
On Thursday I'll have something.
Okay, all right. 9.7, to approve surplus, is there anything?
There'll be something on Thursday as well.
Okay, got it. All right, item 10, Subcommittee and Project Reports.
Yeah.
Matt?
Just a quick, only update I have is, half, half is meeting tomorrow. They were looking for an update on feedback from the School Committee on Thinking Classrooms. So I was obviously seeing a couple of different conversations, and Katie, you've mentioned it, so.
We're going to do a demo tomorrow, it should be fun.
Yeah, it's at the high school, that's right.
Great. Last week, we had a Human Rights Commission meeting where we're really looking at that organization. We've existed for about two and a half years now. We're looking to really sort of do some marketing and sort of take it to the next step and figure out, you know, we sort of built it, and now where do we go with it? So that's interesting. Tomorrow is the Snapboard meeting. And Thursday at 4:30 is the Educational Programming Subcommittee, where we are going to have a sort of preview of the program study before it's presented to the full committee. So if you, it's, and a lot of the Educational Programming Subcommittee meetings are sort of these dry runs and these sort of, we get a sneak peek at something before it comes to the committee. The real benefit of coming to the Subcommittee is you can really be a part of a more robust discussion about it as opposed to hearing a presentation and maybe asking some questions. So it's a different feel for the discussion, so.
No microphones. What? No microphones, very badly bad.
Yeah.
I'm trying to sound like them a little bit.
No, that's why I'm not on this committee.
Salary negotiations last, met last Monday, and the Middle School Council meeting is January 25th. The High School Council is meeting on Wednesday. Building Committee also meeting on Wednesday. Something else on Wednesday as well. But, you know, I did want to give a big shout out to the Building Committee for the Foster School. Linda Rae, Tim, Kevin, Chris, Jen, that group has been together since 2017. And they're very much looking forward to seeing the building. Ben has been, because we are not against to see it because it was so compressed, you know. But they really did a great job. And, yeah, it's been great.
Thank you to you, too. Yes.
Happy to do it and take over Dr. Ed's spot on that committee. Not over yet. We'll take the old building down.
Step one.
Step one, exactly.
Policy Committee met earlier today and just more of a preview meeting of lots of things coming down the plate in the next few months. To Title IX, technology, all kinds of fun stuff, so you'll be hearing more.
Policy is where the real fun is.
Exactly.
That's where we get the real audience.
I thought that was finance.
All I have is their warranties, packets, lots of them.
Thank you.
Should have seen my stack.
I don't have anything to report. So move over to item 11. Anything under 48 hours? No? All right, as Katie mentioned, we have a bunch of budget meetings coming up. We've got one on Thursday, Monday, the 27th, Wednesday, the 29th, February 4th, and February 10th. All right, with that, let's take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.